I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting to order. It's 5:05 on January 22nd. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well called.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes. So it's item two, our work session, and we have three items there. We have our TAN, our Special Education Audit, and our Technology Audit. And how would we like to begin this? The TAN, PI Project. So the genesis of this is...
Well, I think, you know, maybe to kind of just re-ground everybody. So, you know, we have, we've always had kind of a list of ongoing facilities needs that has been evolving over time, you know, and this list has grown and changed over time. Mostly, you know, this has been a byproduct of having older facilities with more needs than we have finances to address. So we've had various studies done over the years. We had one in 2017 by an architectural firm that identified a number of things, and out of that came a prioritized list, which we've been trying to address, and then that list evolves too when we decide to do things like a security vestibule for the middle school that came up, you know, more importantly, or something like tennis courts where, you know, their condition warranted more immediate action. So this list has been evolving over time, and the hope was, a few years ago, was when we were looking at all of our facilities and we were looking at a bond issue to replace four buildings with one new building, just to kind of re-ground everybody. The original estimate on the new building came in at $39 million, and the Board at that time explored what was the most money we could go for in our bond issue, and that number was 44.5 million. So we decided we would use 5.5 million to attack some of this list, facilities needs list. Unfortunately, as pricing has come in, on the new building, it's more expensive than we had anticipated and hoped for, leaving right now the pool of money allocated from the bond issue to address these extra facility needs at 1.2 million dollars. And that number will change as we go for bid on the building as well as the construction process. We may see some savings, or we may run into some unexpected things that might chew into that. So that 1.2 million dollars could grow larger, or it could shrink depending on what happens with the building project. So, given that we don't have the funds to address everything on the list, this high priority list, the idea was brought forward that there is a mechanism in state law that would allow us to borrow money today with interest costs to attack some of these items on our list, and we would be borrowing against future revenues coming in from our PI levies. So we have two PI levies now. They total about 1.8 million dollars. One is primarily for TTT, which is Technology Textbooks and Transportation. So that money usually is going towards bus replacements, it's going towards textbooks, and it's going towards technology and infrastructure throughout the district. The other PI levy, which is about, I think about 800,000, Chris, is about 800,000?
775.
775, almost 800,000. That's what we've been using each year to try to do, you know, facilities needs. So whether that's asphalt and concrete, or it's roofing repair, or what have you, that's what we've been using. So this idea of a TAN came up, which is if the Board wanted to pursue trying to address some of these higher priority items on the list, we could potentially go use this TAN mechanism to borrow money so that we could address these issues sooner, but that borrowing would have costs associated with it. And Craig was able to run a few scenarios which got posted here based on if we borrowed, I think it was 6 million dollars over five years, you know, and the nominal interest rate you pick would have had us, you know, spending over 400,000 dollars in interest, you know, and if we went for 10 years, it'd be whatever, 800,000. So what we're talking about is that if we were, if the Board were to pursue this mechanism, you know, you're also talking about spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in district money on interest that we can't use on facilities, because we would be getting that money today to try to do things today. And so I think what we're gonna, what we were gonna talk about was, we kind of reformatted, I reformatted the list of priorities a bit just to take the information that Chris had and just put it into a different view so that people could see, the Board could see kind of where we're at, where we were at with some of this, and put some notes in there. And I think the idea is to kind of talk through, you know, how urgent are these needs and is the Board interested in pursuing TAN funding to try to address some of these, and if so, what would that look like in terms of how much we would want to pursue?
I thought that we were, and you just are just way more proactive than I anticipated. I thought just last week we were gonna wait until you were officially onboard in February to look into that.
I appreciate you doing it so quickly, although I was reading through the email, seeing it
doesn't look like you have an opinion at this point as to which way you lean.
Well, yeah, it's just, for me, it's a little bit hard because I don't, I'm, hopefully we'll have a discussion of some of the needs, because what is the priority and like when does this need to be done, as well as maybe make sure we've looked at all of the mechanisms. So part of the discussion that I was gonna maybe talk about too is that, you know, there may be a possibility we can borrow against ourselves, we can borrow against the general fund, to then pay back, and there's different things you can look at. So I was able to talk to the Auditor's Office today, just from an audit standpoint, because you can move, the Board can move funds between like a, you know, a permanent improvement fund and the general fund, but still has to make sure it qualifies. So the answer is yes, we can technically do that, which would eliminate the interest fees, which I believe are, it's a, and that is a market, that's a real interest rate that was pulled as of yesterday, so that was not just picked up at the cloud, that would be what we get, which is a very, very small percentage, but when you look at it over five years over that amount of money, it's a substantial amount of money. So, yes, I would, I have cautions over the use of TAN personally, because of the cost of the interest, but also recognizing the needs of the district and looking at those projects. I'm still catching up on some of the projects though.
Well, I guess, one of my questions would be, and nobody's gonna have an answer for this, although some people, you know, might be able to provide a pretty educated opinion, but this issue we have with the school building, like the construction costs came in so much higher than we thought, so are the construction costs or like the project costs gonna be more over that period of time than the interest that we pay? And I realize nobody's gonna have an answer to that question, but I feel like maybe some people who are in the business could provide an educated guess, like the cost of those projects is gonna increase by 500,000 if you wait six years, so you might as well pay the, I'd be curious to hear that, we get that information.
We've gotten some different quotes. I mean, even, even in the PI meeting, you have seen like some of those costs have gone up, and that's really due to labor and your inflation and, you know, construction costs right now are crazy. You know, concrete has gone up like 12 dollars a yard in just two years. I mean, it's really insane. So, yeah, right now, the longer you wait, you're gonna have, you're gonna have larger costs for projects just because of labor costs and materials costs, the longer you wait. And some of these projects have been on your list since prior to 2014. So how much of a gamble do we wanna take in terms of how much longer some of these projects are going, you know, these things are going to last? You know, we can keep band-aiding and band-aiding, and then some, at one point, band-aiding is gonna become more expensive than actually just, you know, ripping it off and starting over on some of them. So, and as Craig said, TAN is one option. I mean, Mark and I, and Chris had a conversation yesterday, you know, there's some carryover money, you could opt to do something, but I think the conversation really needs to be, you know, are we committed to doing some of these things that we've identified that are high priority, things that maybe we put off or we band-aided, you know, do we, do we just, do we bite the bullet actually and just kind of do it all at once? However the method is, whatever method of money or however you want to finance it, could be a second conversation, but I think first, you know, the Board needs to decide, you know, is this something that we want to address, or do we want to keep addressing it in the way that we have been, and that's strictly been through PI and, you know, chipping away at these things and letting some things, you know, go down the road a little bit?
I think some of this too, because the number one item on the list is roof, you know, roof replacement, roof repair. And years ago, and I can't remember how long ago it was, but we had, we had an assessment done, and, you know, they came, you know, they came back saying, do you remember the numbers, Chris?
Here has been 6 million dollars on roofs.
Yeah, it was, it was a massive number that said, hey, you should really like replace almost all your roofs.
That was in 2012.
Yeah, and so at the time, the Board thought that doesn't seem to make much sense. And so, Chris, maybe you could, you could give some, some background on what approach we decided to take, which was kind of a value-based approach.
So, so obviously, our goal is to extend the lives of the roofs that we have, and we've invested there. To Joel's point, I started in 15. The roofs were leaking, there was a number of roofs leaking because when the Board is faced with a multimillion dollar project, and there's no way to fund that at the time, I think we probably, we were going through the renewal cycle on levies, and I think, you know, we hadn't asked for new money in probably eight or nine years at that point, so finances were tight, so there was no way for the district to come up with 6 million dollars to do this large 6 or 7 million dollar roof project. Roofs were leaking, and so we started repairing roofs. And we don't spend 6 or 7 million dollars to replace a roof, we repair it. We are in a cycle of where we repair the roofs at this point until we no longer can repair the roofs. We've had some success in repairing the roofs, and that, Mark and I actually spoke yesterday about when, when you repair it, obviously you save a lot of money, you're repairing a 30-year-old roof, are you going to get five or 10 more years out of that roof, or will that roof start leaking again next year? And we've had some success in our repairs. We have stopped the water and the leaks from coming in very successfully with some repairs. We've done some very focused replacement on roofs where they're, they were beyond repair. We attempted to repair, and then it would just leak 10 feet further away, we'd repair that area and it would leak. And so we couldn't stop the water, and so we've done some very focused repairs. This summer's replacement is on a roof that is original, I believe it's nearly 60 years old, and we can't, we've tried to repair it unsuccessfully, and so we'll replace that roof, but the repairs that we are using, right, doing right now have been successful. And so an approach is to go in and invest in repairs. Again, again, when we repair, we've been very successful with our repairs. For the most part, we will reach a point where that level of success will be diminished. So the investment in the repair, will it still last another five years, or will we get a year out of it? A goal, regardless of whether we repair or replace, is to stop the roof leaks, and that's been a focus of the PI Committee and myself since day one, because the roofs were, they're not in the best condition. And again, an investment into those has shored those up. Again, we talk about a report that was done by roofing experts some years ago, roofs have life expectancies. We have taken a majority of our roofs beyond their life expectancy. So very good work was done before I got into the district with repairs, and we have redone a number of those repairs, and those are very successful. We're coming to the, what I would call the life expectancy of that repair will come in another year or two, and we'll need to invest again in those repairs.
So there's probably a good analogy would be our tennis courts. We repaired our tennis courts well beyond what they would normally last, and we kept buying more time and extending that runway of time, of usage, until we got to the end of the road, and the tennis courts cannot be repaired anymore. And so, we're not, we're not at that place with the roofs yet, at least, you know, we've been repairing them, we've been able to buy ourselves more time. We don't know how long that will last, but we know that we've been able to continue to extend their life and their usefulness. And so, so from an urgency standpoint, when we look at this, we're not at the same place as I would say like the tennis courts, where we know we're at the end of the life. So none of our roofs are technically at the end of their life, they're still repairable, but we know that that day is coming, that we will get to the end of the life. And so, you know, one question on this would be, you know, is now the time to put, you know, to commit down a pathway like this where you know that there's, you know, taxpayer money that's going to be used on financing costs potentially if we were to do a TAN? Or do we stay the course, and there are variables that are gonna come into focus in the next few months, next six months? One thing is, Craig will be coming onboard, so he'll get a chance to settle in and hopefully, you know, bring some, some thought ideas to the table with, with where we're at. When we get into our board meeting, we look at the financials, the latest financials that show us trending, 800,000 to the positive, which means by the end of the year, if that trend continues, we might have 800,000 more in the general fund than we had forecasted, you know, back in October. You've got, you've got the high school foundation analysis, which is wrapping up, which we're waiting to see, what are we, what's that cost going to be? You've got the building project bid day, what kind of bid day savings are we gonna get? You know, are we gonna have less money, or are we gonna have more money? So you've got these variables that are gonna unfold in the coming months, which will give us more clarity on what, you know, what this is gonna look like. So is now, is today the right time to say, let's commit to go doing this, or do we, you know, do we instead say, let's just pump the brakes on this a little bit and wait and see? Because we don't have, we don't have a burning fire that we have to put out right now, like this roof is toast and we've gotta replace it. The other, the other comment I would make too, and Craig alluded to it, you know, we have 18 million dollars in the general fund. I mean, you could use that money to fix any one of these if the Board so desired. I mean, it's not preferable that you're taking money from the general fund to get on these PIs, but you could do that. So if tomorrow, if, if today the Board decided, let's put this on the back burner, and tomorrow the roof went, you could say, look, we need, the best course is spend a million dollars and replace the high school roof. You could say, let's authorize go to the general fund and use a million dollars and replace the roof, and then, you know, we figure out later, you know, what that looks like. So money out of the general fund is, you know, it's what's used primarily for operating expenses in the district. And so at some point, when the trend line on those forecasts starts showing the expenses exceed revenues, you start chewing into your cash balance. That's what starts driving the conversation about, we either need to rein in expenses, or we need to look at generating new revenue, which means another levy. And so, but that's, we have, usually you have runway on that, you can start planning for it, like, hey, you know what? We wanna, we wanna extend that, that need for new money, so let's start changing course with our ship now on expenses. What, where can we rein in expenses? And that buffer is the cash balance, which can extend your runway a bit. So if you pull money from it to do a big project, you're affecting your, your runway of when you might need to go for a new levy, but not in a material effect. Like if we took a million dollars out of cash balance today, I don't think that would cause us to go out for a new levy a year earlier than we normally would, because a million dollars, although it's a lot of money, you know, and from an operating standpoint in a, you know, 48 million dollar budget, it's not, it's not huge.
I would say the only timing thing that, you know, the Board just needs to consider when making this decision is, you know, the reason this is coming up now is because if the Board were to opt to do any of these repairs, most of this work can't be done during the school year, you're not gonna be putting on a roof when kids are there. So it's a timing issue as well to say, you know, if the Board agrees to do this, we can go out for bid, and some of this work can get done over the summer when the kids aren't here. If the Board opts to put it on the back burner and not make that decision until we have some additional clarity on some funds that are coming in, that's gonna push the timeline to do anything if you choose to do anything another whole year, because you're not gonna be able to do some of this work during the school year. So it's just something to consider when you're thinking about now, or thinking about, you know, putting it off, that there's also a timing issue that we're trying to do some of these things when we're not in session as well.
Well, I have a couple of questions. When will we know, or I shouldn't say we, but when will SHUP know, like, how the bids come in? I thought that was...
They have to pay for bids to come in, I believe it's February 7th, they quickly review those bids, and I think they have a GMP scheduled for our February board meeting to say, here's where, here's where the project is gonna come in at that price. So we'll know by, you know, mid-February where the project stands. And again, most of any bid day savings, the Board has the option of doing what they want with that, however, there's a time period that you have to wait to use that money too, because you, you look at contingencies and other things that are going on. So you'll have a little bit more clarity on what the project will cost at that point.
Okay. And then, did I read through some of your information correctly, Chris? Do we already have money set aside to do that middle school security foyer later this year?
We have identified bond, the building fund money.
Okay. So that, that project is...
It's currently being designed as we speak. And that, that, I mean, we just gave that direction at the last core meeting two weeks ago. So they're doing that design, and that's something that, you know, while we wouldn't, they should have design done so we could do that for the summer, so that's something that is already kind of in process. But again, it's just a guesstimate on the cost of what we think it's gonna be.
Chris, just to clarify, I mean, if we, if we needed to go forward with some major roof repair, are we saying we would have to empty the building and we couldn't do the repair and use the building at the same time?
It's not a good idea to replace roofs while students are in session.
But like the high school, which is...
Different from the seniors.
Right. But like the high school, the shingle replacement, that's a pitched roof with shingles on it, right?
I, I would, I would not recommend to the Board to do a large roof replacement project while students are in session. I would not make that...
It's so distracting too. I mean, I've lived through that, and we're at OST time, so, I mean, this is our big time in education, so it's just distracting. Loud, smells, goes to the ventilation, am I not right, or?
So the pitched roofs, it's going to be loud, they're going to be using air guns to dry nail into a wood deck.
You know, here's, so to me, this seems, I understand we need to do some of these things, we do need to get to work on them, I recognize that. Although, I also recognize the fact that I feel like I haven't had a substantial conversation on our finances for five months, where we're going through, you know, I really would like you to come onboard, Craig. I'd like you, you know, to get up to speed, obviously, as fast as you can, and I'd like to hear somebody making recommendations on here's what your options are, because the TAN is one option, and there are a multitude of options, it seems like. So, and I don't know how, but I would, I need guidance, and that's what your job is, and so I would, I cannot, I can't condone this this month for sure, until I feel like I understood everything, and I don't even have a full understanding.
It seems to me I agree with the variety of options that we potentially have, and which makes sense, or what blend or combination makes sense.
I agree with both of you. I think it would be helpful though to, like, get some, like, data in about the increase in construction costs over, you know, the last 12 months, or, you know, I don't know how we access that information, presumably like...
What Joel said, by the middle of next month, the bids are done, so we know what it's gonna cost.
Well, right, but I guess, I, part of the motivation to borrow is because we can do the projects now when they only cost this much. If we wait another year, they're gonna, you know, we have to wait construct, so that would be a really important, frankly, I think...
Well, we may have the money to do a lot of those things, so I don't even know that borrowing has to be an option. So in my mind, before I start looking at what the cost is, because I see those as a priority, I know that we haven't been able to do those things, I recognize that, and I recognize also that we need to do a lot of those things, and that it's been vetted in a priority list, so it must be important. But what, for me, I need to see what, I wanna, I wanna put that as the very last choice that I have is borrowing this TAN, and I want to see all the other options that I have with, you know, the GMP, with all the other creative funding things that you may come up with, and then have that at the bottom, you know, to say, listen, and then this much might, we might have to borrow if you wanna tackle this, the rest of these priorities. But again, I have not had anything substantial financially in five months, so I would like to have something, please.
Sure. So for the Board, it's very difficult to project or predict future construction costs. I might suggest an approach to find out what the five-year average has been over the last five years, and that would give us a good range of what those costs would be. They have been going up significantly more in recent years.
I don't, I don't feel like anybody on this Board, though, maybe I'm incorrect, so please speak up, but wants to defer not tackling a priority list that's already been vetted. I'm sure we would want to attack as many of the things that we can fund within whatever each of us finds reasonable. At least that's how I feel. So I wanna, I would like to hit all of those. I don't want to be thinking that I'm going to be pushing it out a lot farther, but I don't even wanna go there until I see what my options are and what my possible pot of money is, because I don't know that.
Well, one thing, I guess I would just caution too, is that there's not, even when Craig comes in and, and, you know, gets settled and you start looking, we're not going to find a pot of gold sitting around saying, here's 5 million dollars, we can just do all these projects, right? What we're talking about is, where can we get funding from? Whether you take it, take it from the general fund, or borrow it from the general fund, or some of our bid day savings come in better than we expect, you know, or our trend line continues and we end up with an extra million and a half dollars. At some point, so you're gonna identify some of these, at some point, the question is, you know, we're not going to end up with whatever 5, 5 million dollars to do all 11 items on the list right now, so the, unless we really wanted to do that. I mean, you could take 5 million dollars out of the general fund and do all of them, but there is another component of this, which is, which is, they've been, the items have been prioritized, but how many of these would we really want to use that funding for today, realizing that some of these items might need to stay on the list and be deferred to another day? I mean, remember, when the new building comes online, the three old buildings go offline, that PI money now gets infused back into the other buildings. So we do end up with more funding opportunity after the old buildings go offline. When we take the old buildings offline, the Board also will then have choices to make, what do you do with that property in those buildings? You know, I mean, Central's already spoken for, because that's in trade, but the other three buildings. So, so, you know, some of this is gonna be looking at how many, how many of these really rise to the level that say, based on our funding options, do we wanna do this? So roofing can't, a full roof replacement can't be done when school is in session. So that item in particular, I'll go back to Chris and ask, and I know it's a difficult ask, but is there any way to get a sense of, can we make it another year kind of thing, right? If we don't do it this summer, can we make it another year? What are our odds of making it another year, so to speak?
We will make it as many years as we have to make it. I mean, I think that that needs to be understood. We have to do what we have to do to keep the roofs tight. I just, I reiterate, I was asked prioritize, and I prioritize roofs.
I got you, and that's, and that's being respectful, you know, where we, you know, we ask for that to happen. So in my mind, I don't see why we just don't wait, wait, continue this discussion in February, when we have more information with the understanding and the hope that we do tackle as many of those projects as possible with the prioritize, you know, prioritized list that was come up with, you know, by you, and the PI Committee also helped contribute to that as well. So is there anybody who's against that? That concept of pushing this to February for the idea that we'll have more information and Craig will have more time to look at it?
And I would, I would just say, on this list, what you don't see is what Mark talked about before, is the issue that we're currently assessing at the high school, the structural... issue.
Right.
That might rise right up there to the top, depending on what, you know...
Yeah.
Depending on what they find and what that analysis looks like. So this number is fluid, and, and, and Mark and Chris and I have this conversation, you know, this is a fluid number, because as things come up that you don't plan on, that eats in, not, not necessarily to talk about these specific projects, but something could happen in the time that, you know, we're deferring it, that all of a sudden becomes the number one priority that's not reflected on this list, too. So, you know, when you're looking at this number, and again, this is just to kind of frame you, it's not to tell you what to do. But just to frame you, you know, that number 5.1, depending on what we find at the high school, might shoot up to six. And then it might be that something else happens during the course of this year, and we come to you and say, oh, my gosh, we weren't expecting this, but, you know, the, the boiler blew at one of the buildings. And now that becomes a priority. So, you know, this is the number, right now, on January 22nd, 2020, doesn't mean it's going to be the number tomorrow. So just, you know, keep that in mind as you're thinking about ways. And, and just for clarity for Craig and, and my standpoint, you want more information for February, you want more financial information on options to how to fund this. But you, I, I think I heard you say, whether it's a tan product or it's something else, I mean, borrowing is one option, regardless of what product you use to borrow. And then you want other options of not to borrow?
Other options, period.
Or options...
Multiple ways that we can borrow money.
Options to borrow less, at less of a cost. So borrowing is still an option the board is willing to look at. So borrowing is not off the table?
No, it's my last option, to be quite frank.
I don't think anything's off the table.
Because then, I need to look at the priorities and where we're at with these priorities. And if it's something that can wait, then maybe it would move to that spot if we don't have the money. I don't know. I mean, I don't know how much we actually are going to have a month from now. I don't know what that number is. So is it still an option? I still want to have a discussion about those 10 things.
I think...
Some of those things, according, like, to Mark, like, to Mark's point, how emergency is it? Can it be pushed off?
Well, and, and that's part of what I was going, is like, when you look at some of these things, you know, so, you know, like, a full roof replacement would need to be done in the summer. So there's a timeline that if, if you were, wanted to do a full roofs replacement, you would need to get your, your bid packages out, and you have a, you need some runway before you go do that. But, you know, now, if Chris, when I asked earlier, if he would have said, there's a 50/50 chance that within the next year, we need to do a full roof replacement, right then it's like, ah, there's a lot of risk there. But the patching approach, while there, there could be, you know, it could vary in some costs, you're basically saying, look, wherever the leak is, for right now, we can fix it. So, I mean, we can build, just keep building these little bridges to tomorrow with roof repair, which means if the board chooses not to do roofing this summer, we can make it to the following summer. It just, you might have some higher roofing repairs if you have some, some bigger failures. So...
We're, we're a little late right now.
We're late? That was my question. So you need, you need to know, like, now, if we're going to replace the high school roof this summer?
Um, we open our roof bids tomorrow for this year's project.
Okay.
Okay. So if we don't let you know today, the high school roof is not going to get replaced in 2020?
And again, we had a pretty significant conversation yesterday. We, we are patching roofs. We, we continue to invest in keeping the buildings dry. So whatever that takes.
Chris, why is that? Why is, why is that not a possibility to wait just three weeks? We're going to lose out on the best bid? Like, what, what's going on?
So, so I would not do roofs. I would not plan a large roof project for the summer of 2020.
In February?
And I would not get out to bid. So what happens is, those contractors, we had very good participation in our, our recent bid. Uh, we had eight or nine contractors out here. They're all working to fill their book...
Right.
For this summer.
Gotcha.
Um, so if we were to get a board approval tonight, we're a month out, but we're collecting bids, we're awarding bids in March, our contractor pool is diminished. We're not getting a good contractor, we're probably getting higher prices.
Okay. So coming back to Joel's point, you know, like, you're willing to do that as a board, and that's time sensitive. Is there anything else on that list that is the same situation, where we're going to lose options?
Well, I, I will be before the board in February with the stadium repairs.
Okay.
At the Leecher.
Gotcha.
The Leechers at the stadium.
Right.
Uh, we're doing the investigation at the high school now.
Well, well, that's February. But today?
Not today.
Which, this is, I, I think I know the answer to this, but I'll ask this anyway. So I see the middle school roof estimate is much lower than the high school roof estimate. But we wanted, you, those should be done together, presumably, just for economic purposes?
Not necessarily. So the shingle roof is the largest portion of the cost that you're looking at. That's at least a million to do the shingle.
Just to cut some groups.
And then you have the flat roofs.
Okay.
Which would be the other $350,000, plus we have some PI slotted to do some additional roofs on top of that.
Well, does it make sense to spend $250,000 on the middle school roof replacement this summer and at least get, just get that done?
Oh, we're doing a roof replacement at the, at the middle school this summer.
Oh, okay. All right, never mind.
It's not a big project, but it's the one that we're having trouble with.
Okay. So Chris can move forward with what he needs to move forward with in a timely fashion. Is everybody okay with the fact that that, we, number one priority, we okay for him to go out to bid? We'll talk about the funding mechanism next month? We actually have, yeah.
Wait, wait. Maybe I missed something. He's going to go out to bid for what?
He's, for the roof, isn't, isn't that what you asked?
We already, we already went out to bid for that.
You're talking about the middle school.
The middle school.
The middle school. You're not talking about the, you know, 1.3, right?
No.
No. Sorry.
No, we, we, we can wait till February in, in conversation, because we won't go out to bid to have that roof, roof replaced until the summer of '21.
Right. So there's no rush for us to make a, to make a decision about this tan funding or whatever funding mechanism is. Although, we were talking about pushing it a month, there's no, there's no immediate need to push it a month. I mean, at least from the roof standpoint. The other...
Yes.
Yeah, the other items, you know, is there anything else that's, that's got to be, you know, that the window is still there and you need direction on, like, right now, like the, you know, the DDC controls or the...
So I, I would say air conditioning and DDC controls are, are certainly a hot topic right near the security vestibule. Uh, one thing that occurs with the air conditioning and DDC control is that number includes adding air conditioning into spaces that are not air conditioned at the middle school, as well as the replacement of a 60-ton air conditioning unit that I believe I identified to the board two years ago as being problematic. Again, our approach is, we fix it. Our, and we will continue to fix it. Those, those repairs are very costly when you start talking, oh my gosh, as a 50-year-old air conditioner. Uh, the Freon, the coolant goes into those air conditioners are no longer, it's no longer available, you can't get it. We bought a pallet of it two years ago and paid $20,000 for it so that we could keep that unit running. Uh, because when it fails, it leaks Freon.
This is at the middle school?
At the middle school.
Right.
Um, one thing, and, and we would, I would want to have a conversation with the architect, is if you're doing air conditioning repairs and you plan on doing other renovations, there's a very specific sequence that needs to go in place if you're adding air conditioning to spaces. So if you're going to plan to do ceilings, where you have open ceilings, you need to do the air conditioning first. If you're going to do lighting, where you have old ink crate style light fixtures, you probably need to do the air conditioning first, before you would address those other construction items.
And does this need, is this, does this need to be a summer project?
Yes.
And where are we at in a, in the window to, if we wanted to pursue this or not? Are we, is the window closed?
Um, I like to make sure that we get bids. Um, we have state term pricing, and if it was identified as we want to do this summer, we could do state term pricing. I'm not always convinced that that is the cheapest or best for the Board of Education. Construction manager at risk or bid, because the construction manager bids it out as well. So it's always, in my opinion, to be competitive in nature. State term is competitive to, to an extent. It's not...
Would it be fair when we look at the, if we look at this list, to say, we've already talked about roofs in 2021, you know, that this, that, you know, the DDC controls and AC could be 2021, that, you know, we have a little more runway, that, that the urgency to make a decision today or in three weeks from today, you know, that, that most of these items on the list are not, you know, it's not a fire that needs to be put out right away, that we have, we can keep, we can keep limping along...
Yes.
For another year. And then that way, we could potentially have more time for Craig to settle in, more time for some of these variables to take focus, so we see what do they look like, the things that we talked about, and where our funding is. And then we have, we have a more, a more carefully thought-out plan of, okay, what are we going to attack in 2021, and where are we going to get our funding from, and what is that going to look like?
So, so my only observation I would make is, um, as far as the roofs go, we can, we can patch the roofs and we can be effective repairing roofs. When the 60-ton air conditioner goes, there is a much higher probability that there will come a time where we can't repair it.
Um, and I have to say, I don't, like, this isn't any fire drill, but I don't want to say to Craig, start, you know, in two weeks, and don't do any, you know, don't look into any other options that we might have, because I, I, I just keep harking back to, this is what, we passed that levy in 2017 or 2018, and look at how much the construction costs increased. Let's get some of this stuff done sooner rather than later, because if we just sit here and wait and wait and don't do additional research, we're, it's going to be a year from now, and then this cost is going to be up at, you know, $7 million instead of $6 million. So I guess I just want to keep juggling, and I'd like Craig to come back next month and say, this is, you know, these are your options now. I don't want to just table it for another year.
No.
But, so, again, and I'm sorry, I'm going to speak for you and I, I, I still am not clear on what you want us to come back with in terms of options. So you have borrowing, regardless if it's a tan, regardless if it's going to a bank and taking, whatever it is, borrowing is an option. But then, it's general fund. Like, what, what other information are you looking for in terms of finance, so that we can prepare that for you? Because I'm not clear what else you want to see.
Two option, it, it, part of a borrowing option, though, what I'm saying, that there's two options in terms of the general fund. So either you're taking it from the general fund in terms of the cash reserve, or you're borrowing from the general fund. So both of those, and I think, I mean, I hope I'm clear with that. So there's two different options. So the general fund can be borrowed from, or it can just be given, so we can use the general fund. That in itself is two different options, plus the tan being three options. With the borrowing and general fund, though, even though I've gotten some guidance from the Auditor of State's office, um, I just need, I would need to check with legal counsel as well, which was recommended, just to make sure that we do that case. But either way, you're going to have legal fees in terms of a tan or, or borrowing from the general to make sure it's done properly.
But those are the only three options, I guess is what I'm getting at?
Any of the general, yes.
So, so that's, so that's what I'm saying. If those are the only three options, what additional information do you want as a board to help make that decision about the financing piece of it?
I would like to know what Craig's opinion is, like, what he would recommend.
Okay.
I'd like to see, um, what projects can be accomplished with which methods of delivery. And if there's a way to vary any of the two options.
Well, well, just, just to also to clarify, so, like, right now, the, the security vestibule is pegged at 350, and the fire alarm system at the middle school was 3, 3-something, right? So, so both of those were, were coming out of the bond funds. So there's about 650-ish that we allocated out of the bond funds, which means if the 1.2 million held, right, then there's still another half a million out there that could be used to fund some of these things. So that's where you get into these variables, right? So the, the high school foundation, you know, the, the general fund is trending in a more positive light right now. Uh, you know, we don't know what the bid day savings are, right? I mean, you know, so, so some of these things, some of these things are, you know, the construction costs, they could go up significantly, or they could flatline, right? Nobody knows that. I mean, it, you know, it goes up and down based on the economy, right? You know, we end up with a recession, and then all of a sudden, you know, contractors are all fighting for work and prices come down. So you don't, you know, there is no way to predict what that is. What we do know is, is that if we just postpone the discussion, that more of these things will start to come into focus, and we'll have a better idea, as well as Craig will be in the chair and be able to get more, you know, situated with...
I'd like to, I'd like to do that for at least a month and see where we're at.
Well, does it make more sense to do in March? And I, and again, just to put it in perspective, because we're not going to know GMP, we're not going to know, we're not going to have that. So for Craig to come back and give you an analysis to say, here's, here, some money can come from here, some money can come from here, it might be clear to do it in March. I'm just...
Yeah, we're already, we're already saying that, you know, item number one, which is the, the high school roof is going to be postponed until next summer anyway. So I think the rest are relatively, relatively smaller pieces. And I think it's not going to hurt us to wait until March to get as full a picture as we can all the way around.
GMP is not till March, not February?
Well, no, in fact, but see, we'll get that information about the time of the board meeting. So if you're expecting us to...
It won't be February 6th. Okay.
We won't have, we won't know or be able to do that analysis to look at and say, okay, this is how much, you know, out of the contingency we have, this is how much. We won't be able to do that analysis in time, because it's going to time up too close to your board meeting. So the preference would be, let's do it in March, we'd have all that, be able to analyze it, put some scenarios together to say, you know, we have $800, $800,000 in savings here, we can use this, we can push these two things together and do these pro, like, we could do that analysis for you if we do it in March.
Okay. So we have direction. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And then I was wondering what, what's going on with the tennis courts?
We're going to talk about that in regular meeting, and we invited the tennis court families and coaches to come.
So we're going to move on, then. We have direction for that. We're going to move on to item two, our special education audit. Um, this started back in August, part of a forum that Mrs. Magiar created, along with representation from Mrs. Kramer and myself. Um, we engaged in ongoing discussion, um, monthly, um, to, with our special education parents, to try and improve our special education services. A lot of great things came out of this forum, and, um, a lot of great direction to improve our education. And, and part of that discussion was this audit, as part of us looking at how we deliver services. Is that correct? Good explanation?
Um, yeah. I, the special ed audit, it's, it's a little bit deeper than that, and I think it would be, so we, you know, we, we're constantly being told that, you know, we're, we're understaffed and we're not staffed appropriately in our special education, you know, by our special education staff. Um, you know, being told by mostly some of our staff that, you know, we're not following state set ratios and all of these things. And then we have a parent component that is saying, you know, this is how we don't feel that you're delivering services in an adequate way. And so I think the best way to, to attack all of those issues is to have a third party come in and do a special ed audit. This particular company, the contract that I provided you, has done some other local school districts throughout, throughout the state with very good results. So they will analyze your staffing levels. They will talk to all of the special ed staff. They will talk to Dr. Simsek. They will talk to some of our parents, and they will get a full picture. They'll look at our data. They'll look at IEPs. They'll look at our methods of services, and then make recommendations based on all of that information to tell us what we can do. In, in the cases in the other districts, um, the people who have engaged in this audit, they make recommendations to say, to show you how you can save money. Um, and the district that I previously was employed in, they made a recommendation that said, if you do X, Y, and Z, you can save yourself about $450,000 a year, which is a significant, um, amount of money, as we're talking about projects here.
That's half a roof.
That's right. That's the middle school amount. But it's a significant saving. So, um, I, I think it would be very proactive of the board and to, and to our district to, you know, take all these issues that we've been hearing about over the last couple of years, have a third party come in and give us a nonviolent opinion on all of those things. So staffing, how we're spending our money, how we're delivering services. And then we can bring that report back to the board to make recommendations and say, here's what, here's what they're seeing, and, you know, put some cost and see where the board wants to go in terms of direction on that.
So how long would an audit like this take?
It's going to take a few months for them to, to do, because they're talking to a lot of people, they're looking at a lot of documents, um, so a lot of interviews. So they determined it's about three months long to, about three months long it's going to take.
Yeah, they have a timeline.
Yeah, they have a timeline. So, and we didn't start according to exactly their timeline, but we've been in conversation and told them that we were having this discussion and that we would be able to provide direction here very shortly.
Does anybody have any more questions from Mrs. Magiar?
Well, just, before everybody got here, I don't know if anybody, like, I, I was just asking about our tuition costs, which have risen dramatically over the last few years. And Joel was saying...
For students who don't attend IGAS Direct 2, you were saying? For students who don't attend our district, you were saying.
Sure, which was speaking of.
Right, right. And she was just saying that, you know, perhaps one positive outcome of this is that it would cut down on, you know, some of those really significant costs.
Sure. And so many of those, as I explained to Ellen, would, were, you know, we've, unfortunately, we've had some issues come up where parents want to take us through due process. Due process is extremely expensive. As you know, we went through one a couple of years ago and the bill's total, you know, a significant amount of money. Sometimes it's better to settle and do a settlement agreement. Some of the settlement agreements that we agree to are, you know, one to two year, two to three year settlement agreement. And then we can sit back down at the table and renegotiate that. And so, you know, sometimes the settlement agreements are necessary because we may not have the, the specific service that that child requires here. So for, for example, we don't have necessarily an emotionally disturbed unit that we have or a low incidence unit in our school district. So if we have a child who's identified and we can't meet their needs in our district with the services that we do provide, that might be something that we have to contract out. So one of the things that they'll come in and do and help us identify is, you know, where do we impose in our continuum of services and what would be the recommendation? So, you know, they might come back and say, you might want to consider putting this because it'll save you $200,000 a year if you can bring these kits back because now you can provide that service. That's the information that we want to get from this audit so that we, they can make some recommendations from a third party rather than people, you know, I think I feel, let's get some data behind it and let somebody else come in and tell us, you know, what they're seeing.
Okay, any other information needed?
And then the tech audit is kind of in the same venue is to look at the efficiencies of our technologies. We've, we've had some struggles with some things in the past. We had to upgrade our voicemail system. The voicemail system hasn't integrated properly the way that it should be integrated. And so we had some printers come online a couple of years back that, again, we continue to struggle with. And so not that it's the printer or not that it's the voicemail or not that it's even our technology, we need to have a better understanding as to why some of these systems are not working. And in that, in those conversations where we've talked about these things not working, the question has always come up to me is that we're bringing on this 190,000 square foot new building that is going to have the, the most up-to-date technology that we know of in two years. And if our, can our system efficiently run that technology that's going to be in this new building? I don't know the answer to that, we don't know the answer to that. So the way to start is to look at what we currently have and have an efficiency study done to determine if what we are currently running, what we are currently using, looking at our servers, looking at our systems, looking at our security of our current system, and have somebody come in and do that analysis and then make some recommendations to us to say, you know, in order to support this new building coming on and all of this brand new technology, you might need to do X, Y, and Z. And that's kind of what we're looking for. Because I don't know and, you know, we don't know because this is a new build for us and 27 years ago, there, when we built the high school, there wasn't the level of technology that's going to be in this building. So we really want to make sure that we are equipped and properly being able to support what is going to happen in that new building.
Any other questions? All right, move forward.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so that will end our work session discussion. I'm going to take a five-minute break to go get food.
Yes, there's food in the kitchen.
Because the next thing is executive session, do we want to go into executive session then we can?
Okay.
Then we can get food and, because we're, we're going to do the food while we're in executive session.
Okay. Well, that'll leave Mr. Martin. Okay, may I have a? Roll call?
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wegman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mann?
Yes. This is executive session is for the consideration of confidential information related to the negotiations with the city of Brexville respecting requests of economic development assistance pursuant to ORC Section 1 to 1.22. We will now be in executive session.
Re, re.
And reconvene at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to reconvene our meeting. It is 7 o'clock. I have item five, President's Announcements. This is, this announcement I have is very important to this board. It has come from the last couple of years of hearing that our district isn't recognizing both communities. And so this is a very sensitive topic and we recognize the fact that this isn't the way it should be because we're supposed to be one community. I've asked Mrs. Magyar to send out this announcement to all official coaches, to all team managers, anybody who represents our district. We're going to be sending this out to city council as well in Brexville and Broadview Heights. I've asked her also, you know, to send it to our PR person so that it can also be pushed out as well to our parents. We would like to make it clear that this board recognizes that this school district should be known as Brexville-Broadview Heights. We reside in both communities and unfortunately, it hasn't always been branded that way. So I'd like to read this to you and this is what will be going out as, as soon as this is over. This is our board statement. Pretending to a matter of great significance and one of community sensitivity, on behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to kindly remind all teams, all clubs, all organizations, and other groups which are formally affiliated with the Brexville-Broadview Heights City Schools that any and all uses of the district's official name is to begin with the Brexville-Broadview Heights City Schools, followed by your organization's name, thereby including a reference to both Brexville and Broadview Heights. Our school-sponsored organization serves students from both communities, as does our entire district. Inadvertent exclusion or of either community from the formal name of our district and its use for your team or club name, though unintentional, is inappropriate and not a clear representation of our school family. Use of our mascot, the Bs, followed by your organization's name or BBHCSE, followed by your organization's name, are appropriate. They are inclusionary alternatives for your use. To close, if and when referring to team clubs, organizations, and other school sanctioned groups, please be mindful to include Brexville and Broadview Heights in the name of our district. As students, staff, and representatives from both communities proudly unite under one umbrella to form our school family and collaboratively enact our belief to be one community. That is my announcement and this will be sent out right after this meeting. Well, maybe tomorrow. Well, I have promised two council members from other when I asked you to do it officially, but I promise. I've had a really great partner with Councilwoman Monick in Broadview Heights and so I assured her that after this meeting I would personally send this to her. So I will be doing that as well as Councilwoman Redinger as well. I'm going to move on. Item six, recognition and presentation. We have item A, tennis court update.
Hey, you're with me. All right, I'm Ryan from TD8 Architecture. Here to give an update on tennis court projects. That means. All right. So what we have here presently, we've gone through the process of getting survey data done and geotechnical borings done for the project site. The area we're looking at is the current existing tennis court location. For anybody not familiar, the middle school is located where I'm showing on the brick over here. There's that large parking lot located here, the stadium's down in this area, baseball fields, tennis courts reside right here. What we have with the existing tennis courts with geotechnical borings that we had done, what that does is it analyzes the material makeup of the subgrade that exists below the tennis courts and the surrounding area. So we had borings done in several locations around the courts and within the asphalt edges to see what we had for that makeup. News was good. There was no real indications of lots of organics or anything of that nature that would give us concern as to settling or things of that nature down the road. But what we've experienced at this site, this is an older tennis assembly that was put in years ago. And so over time, being at the bottom of the hill the way it is, there was water migration off of the parking lot through just the natural flow through the grade and into this base. So at some points, work was done around the perimeter of these tennis courts to install some drainage around the outsides and there were some basins placed up at this end of the site. That has helped to a degree. That won't ever make what's there, something that's salvageable per se. We still have to do a full tear out and we do some sort of a replacement for this project. So that's been our approach. And the thing we want to do is when we replace is put it in a condition that will serve the district for a really long time. So the first issue that we have is taking care of any water that's coming off the parking lot. Presently, this end of the site, this is the dam, so this is existing conditions and what we'd be modifying. This is the revised plan. So currently, there are these handful of basins, there's four basins down in this area that are collecting water from the parking lot. There is a curb along here. This part of the system is working fairly effectively. Down at this end, however, towards the tennis court end, the curb does depress and water is able to flow over the edge of the parking lot. And there are these basins, but they're outside of the parking lot boundary. So what that effectively means is if you have a very large rain event, water, it's all sloping this way, all the little topographic lines are indicating all the slope is going this way. And so all that water is kind of rushing down this parking lot and overflowing this edge, which was leading to some of the problems that have happened in the past.
Ryan, I have a question. Where is the middle school storm line?
Middle school storm line, there is some that runs up in this area up in here, but we're, we're not really touching that.
I understand. I just know what, where it is. Can you have this parking lot line tied to that line right now?
No, this, let me explain the system. I'm not really formatted, I don't know where to, to explain. We can jump back to that if you have questions at hand, just let me know. Let me plow through it and we'll come back to that. But essentially, the way we're, we're going to address this issue, presently, all of this drainage that's here is collected and you can see in the areas, there was a path that was cut into a basin over here by baseball. So this perimeter drainage that was installed was picked up and taken down here. Not a bad idea. This drainage up here, all of this up at the high part of the hill is collected, runs down to this location, ties into the system and goes out this way. That's fine, that's well and good enough, but what that does is there's still this area along the top edge of those tennis courts that's not really being picked up very effectively. So we have that issue of the overflow and then there's just the potential for ponding along these edges. So our proposed solution, what we're doing, there's a few things. First thing we're doing is we're leaving these, these four existing basins that are working effectively in place and then we're taking the basins that are out in the yard and pushing them into the asphalt. What that does is it gets your water collection device in a spot that is more conducive to collection and not allowing it to kind of run into this grassy area. In order to help facilitate that, we're taking and we're cutting out this large section of asphalt and replacing the basins along this curb edge and we're installing a new curb. So what you have now is a curb that rolls off and allows the water to go. We're putting in a curb that will stop the water coming down the hill. We're putting basins along that edge to collect the water and then it's getting tied into this high drainage system. There's a high storm line that comes along here as far as elevationally it's high. So we're able to pick those up and take them down to this location. The other issue that we had previously is all this asphalt, all of this asphalt is, is sloping down this way. So in order to get this redirected and collecting to these basins, we are taking, we're tipping the asphalt back towards the basins and making sure that that water gets collected as effectively as possible. So that is how we're approaching the water that's coming off of the parking lots themselves. This really doesn't change our output to the main drain system that's tied into your detention basins or anything of that nature. These are all calculated for these events. The problem is there is just in some of the detailing deficiencies in how that was originally kind of conceived. So as we move down into the tennis courts themselves, again, that perimeter drainage that was put in was a good, a good step. It's a good effort when you have an existing condition where the tennis courts are already in place and you can't do any sort of subsurface drainage underneath the tennis courts themselves. So that, like I said, has been helping. So what we're conceding for this portion, there are a couple of things. First, we want to collect the water outside of the tennis courts. So we are putting in a series of drains out around the perimeter of the tennis courts that will collect into essentially a drainage system that outlets back over here by baseball, similar to what's installed there now. To add to that system and to make this even more effective than it is presently, the geotechnical report that was done by the soils engineer indicated that we should install some drainage beneath the tennis courts themselves. This is a very common practice. We do it on basically every project we do. And their recommendation was underneath the center of each tennis court to run essentially a collector drain so that if any water migrates underneath the tennis courts, there's somewhere for it to collect and outlet into the main piping system. So essentially, if you get water down the hill, there's collection around the perimeter. If it happens to make that next step and get underneath the tennis courts, there's also collection under the tennis courts to help that to get into the system and out of that area. So what this does also is like I mentioned, we have a high drain system up here on the top of the hill that's collecting for the parking lot. And then we have a low system over here which is collecting for the tennis courts on the perimeter. So we have effectively separated those two items whereas previously, some of this stuff that was along this edge was draining into the same system. So we were having a little bit of competing priorities with the two storm systems. This essentially separates in a way that they probably should have been done initially when it was all installed. The tennis courts themselves are basically taking a very similar footprint. We're just modifying the edges and making sure that all of our separations are meeting state standards and national standards for high school tennis. We're installing perimeter fencing around all of these 10-foot-high chain link, vinyl coated chain link fences, they'll be black fences, which is fairly typical around the area. You're getting the acrylic surfacing across all the tennis court surfaces as well. So that's, that's basically what you've had all this time. It's just going to be nice, new, fresh. It's what you'd see in a tennis court assembly like this. And then obviously new stanchions and stuff of that nature. Any questions to this point? Yes?
Will there be any drainage on the tennis courts themselves in, like, in between the?
Not in the plane of the, the actual courts themselves. So what we do with these is we tend to pitch these a little bit to the outside. If you put any sort of drainage in the courts, that's been done a million times across the country, what that does is it creates weak points in the tennis court itself. It creates areas that you're sloping to, potential for ponding, especially in the winter where you have stuff draining to those areas. So we try to avoid that as much as possible, get the drainage to the outside so we pick it up off of the surface.
So the crown?
Yeah. Slight. You, you don't, the plenary of these courts is very critical. So this, a lot of people go into this going, oh, it's just an asphalt court. It's just, it's not that big of a deal. The plenary of a tennis court far exceeds anything you'd see in a parking lot. So it's very high detail when they're laying that stuff out. It's all laser graded and it's all very tight dimensions and tolerances. So that being said, it should drain very effectively to the perimeter of that collection system.
Because the line goes through between two lines, right?
Right here?
Two courts, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got a collector here and what that does is it allows it all to get to the shortest path, path of least resistance. And we've also taken the measure around both courts at the end of each of these lines to install cleanouts. That's something that people don't think about a lot, but you install all this system and everybody forgets about it. This allows you the potential, not everybody here, but everybody in general forgets because it's underground, it's easy to do. But what this allows you to do, if you're having any sort of issues or there's any sort of backup, all these cleanouts are essentially, you twist them out and you're allowed, you're able to get in there and jet out those lines so you can clean everything up and get any sort of silt or anything like that that's washed into the system, out of the system. It's, it's basically just cleaning house is what, is what it is. And a lot of these old courts that were installed, even if they had drainage underneath them, there wasn't that provision to make sure that you could maintain them down the road. You put it in, silt got into the system, it was basically filled up and that was the end of it. So, other questions? Yes?
So with the drainage as is in the new plan, that looks like it will benefit the baseball courts as well, or baseball field.
It will, it will help. I, I can't say to what degree. I mean, it's really intended, this is intended to make the tennis courts as good as possible, so.
So you were doing main storm line that this is already in it? That's properly sized to handle the middle school parking lot?
Yes, yeah, all the stuff that we're picking up here. There's essentially a, a variety of collection. There's essentially a variety of collection points along this edge, and we're hitting two of them, so.
Right, but there is our central main line that goes across the street. That size to handle all the middle school parking lot. So it's like the surface finish that's on top of it is nothing to do the job of sending the water to the point.
Yeah. Essentially, it's that edge line. It's allowing it to.
About half of this was fixed when they did the football stadium, I think.
This end down here, right? Starting, yeah, so starting at about this, where's the, yeah. The end of this fourth basin, this whole area they had put in curving along that edge. And that has dramatically helped the situation, yes.
Right. So with thickening the other half that's fixed.
Correct, correct. That's essentially finishing off that edge of the parking lot.
Um, the access road that's on top?
Mm-hmm.
Um, what's the flow provision on that road?
It's similar to what we're doing along this edge. So this is a little less dramatic than what we have as far as the situation here. Because essentially, this, you're picking up all the sheet flow off of this parking lot. This, we're picking up just the little bits that kind of run off the drive itself. But along this edge and really around the perimeter, we've got essentially a French drain system with aggregate. And then we've also got a handful of basins around there that'll pick that up as well.
I'm actually catching it, where's it going to go?
It goes into this low drain line. So all of these get picked up into a drain line that ties into this system. So like I said before, some of this was going this way, some of this was coming down this way. And now essentially, we've taken all of the low drainage and tied it into this baseball line. What would help baseball down the road, if you really wanted to get into it, you'd essentially have to come off of this location here and pull something up into this area. Anything we do at the high point of the hill isn't going to help as much as down at the bottom of the hill.
It's not going to contribute any excess, but it's good.
It's, it's gonna, yeah, all this water that was previously coming down here will collect some of that, so it will be taking some of that out of the district.
Correct.
Other questions? Next slide. Any questions from the work? So essentially, what we have, this is our scope of work in a lot of words and not a lot of numbers. But essentially, with the tennis courts themselves, you have the existing courts. So there'd be demo of the existing courts, the existing drainage system, the existing base, pulling out all the asphalt, all those sorts of things. There'd be redistribution of topsoil. So as you're doing this, we'd be regrading. So it's essentially stripping off topsoil around the perimeter, regrading. You end up having to do touch-up and seeding around the perimeters. And then we will have some excess materials because some of it's going to be bad. When we pull this out, it's just going to be saturated or mud or too blended. Because when you pull out, like if we had some aggregate areas and there's topsoil that gets mixed in, it essentially becomes invaluable, it's not valuable for what we're trying to do. We need good compacting soil or we need better drainage as well. So those are the two types of systems. The subgrade, this is essentially the base below the tennis courts themselves. So we, again, we'll be cutting that down. We're going to have to cut it to a depth that allows us to install our new drainage material, which is our base material underneath that. We'd be exploiting all the excess materials that we're humping out of that area. And then the fine grading. So again, the tolerances that I talked about, when they go across the tennis courts and they're doing the drainage, it's very precise. The erosion provisions, this is just standard for any sort of project like this. You just need to put up erosion fencing and stuff of that nature. The storm sewer, we talked about it pretty good detail. Essentially, that's perimeter drains around the tennis courts themselves, the underdrains underneath the tennis courts. And then it's connection points to those existing basins and the system that's down towards the baseball drain itself. And then the tennis courts, last but not least, that is the stone base that goes underneath your asphalt. There's a two-inch asphalt base system. They essentially put down a binder that gets attached to the top of that called the tack coat. And then you put your finished surface on top of that. What this does, this sort of assembly, is down the road, if we get a little hump or bump or something like that in the asphalt, by having these two-piece assembly, it allows it to easily be milled off and you can do some patch repair, something of that nature, rather than ripping out the entire system. So this is kind of a provision. This is how we build just about everything nowadays. After that, you get your inch-and-a-half circus course. There's a curb around the perimeter of the courts to hold them together. Essentially, what you have in a lot of the old courts is around the perimeter edge, there was no sort of restraining element. So asphalt will just kind of fall off and roll off the edges. That leads to more deterioration than anything. You'll see it if you just walk around the outside, it'll crumble. So there's the curving, and then there's a credit court service system that's essentially a two-layer system that goes on top. That's your color, that's what makes it look pretty, and that's what also puts the playing surface on. Ten-foot chain link fence, that's a vinyl coated chain link fence. And that's imposed system. And then there's that existing wood access stair that comes down the hill. We're replacing that with a new concrete steering rail system that comes down off the parking lot. There's going to be enough work over in that area that it's really necessary to do that. So the cost for all of this, it's based off of a project we just completed six months ago. Those came in at about seventy-five thousand dollars a quart. It's very, very, very similar scope in what was done there. And so that's where this pricing really reflects. That was through a bid process, a little bit, stuff of that nature. Nice big firm ended up installing it with great. Parking drainage modifications, we broke this out just to give an indication of while these do not pertain to the tennis courts themselves specifically, these would be long-term a wise choice to install this system. So essentially, this is all that stuff that I was talking about that starts at the curb line and works its way back onto the parking lots themselves. So that picks up the demo of what's there existing. That's topsoil, all that stuff that I mentioned before, the stripping, regrading, prepping, seeding, stuff like that. There is subgrade underneath the asphalt that we'll be repairing and elevating. Erosion control measures, which I mentioned before. The storm sewer, this is adding those handful of basins and then tying into the high collection point. And then reworking, essentially reworking that asphalt that happens at the top edge to drain back to those collection members. And then the other thing that we pick up here too is that two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-eighty foot of curb that wasn't put in previously, that's essentially creating that dam, for lack of a better word, along that edge to help redirect the whole water. So, and this, this is really based on just unit prices for these particular elements. We're in that kind of seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollar range for this portion of the work. Questions on pricing or?
Okay, one question I have. So the contractors that would be interested in bidding on this work, you know, would they be, would they generally be the same ones that would want to do both? Or is the tennis courts more specialized versus the parking and draining is less?
No, I mean, anybody that does this, any of the bigger companies that do like tennis courts, for example, they have either subcontractors that they work with very closely on all these types of projects. They don't want to be constantly going out and trying to find those relationships, or they do it themselves. So this type of work, the subdrain, all the stuff below that is very common and they've been used to doing that, they expect to do that. So there's nothing we're doing here, like you could do the drainage part as a separate project. You could do this as a separate project. You would get advantage in bidding them together. If you ultimately did that, in that you wouldn't be paying as much overhead profit and stuff like mobilization fees, you know, job superintendent fees, stuff like that that they tack on basically other general conditions.
Does it make sense to look at them as two separate projects? In other words, is it prudent, is it a prudent decision to do the tennis courts, as you said, without doing the draining?
I would advise against it. My, my, I always want to do, when you're doing a tennis court that costs this much money, I would highly recommend going to the, to the level of making sure that everything that happens upstream that is taken care of before you put it in. It'd be like installing wood floor in your house and not fixing your roof first. You know, it's, you want to make sure that you've attacked the potential problem and then make sure that everything you do inside is going to be as effective in the long term as you possibly could. I think this solution does all of that. It gets you as much benefit of your tennis courts. And then when you put in your tennis courts, you'll get the most life out of those as you possibly could.
Just for food to thought, okay? Keep food to the perchard again for me?
I will try.
There's a whole road downstream of this that you probably should look at. And there's a half the parking lot that you don't see on top of this curb that you should look at.
This area over here?
I know on top of that big corner.
I'll look at it in terms of.
In terms of stormwater management.
Like enlarging the scope of this to do more?
No, no, I'm just saying, it's, it's, it's something that's going to come down.
Understand.
In the long term. And that road that's downstream of the tennis courts, it's unprotected either.
This, I will say, the conditions you have here are very typical for any sort of campus in the area. A lot of stuff was built very fast in the time period that this was constructed. And so you'd be adding parking lots, doing a lot of those things. And nowadays, when you go back in and you do a parking lot project or you do a tennis court project or something like that, you ultimately go in and try to fix some of those issues that might have cropped up from previous.
Let me ask Chris, because when we went through our PI list, right, there was asphalt, concrete drainage in there, right? So I'm sure this isn't the only place where there's work like this that needs to be done. Does this, you know, you know, is there an opportunity to take that part and bundle it in with other drainage and asphalt work that's needed to bid it? Or is it, you know what I'm saying? Like if you wanted to separate it but still get the economies of doing it with other work?
So you have a large asphalt contractor that could possibly repave a parking lot or a road, do this work rather than the tennis court company?
I'm saying, let's say that, you know, let's say we split the two in terms of timing, right? Because if you picked one company and bid it both, you could do it both at the same time. I'm just thinking, if you split it and you were to do this parking drainage separately, you could, could you potentially bundle it with other similar work we're doing in the district? I think it was two-hundred-and-fifty in our PI list of asphalt drainage, right? So could you take this, bundle it in, just to get better pricing because it's more work?
Can I ask a quick question? Where is the, where, yeah, where are you posing the other work? Because that would be, if it's not close to here, you lose.
The lower road.
This road?
Yes.
That's close enough, you could potentially pick up some advantage for these two. The thing that you won't get ever is if you're starting to do this kind of work, this guy is not the same as this guy. Those are two different types of contractors. So you're not getting that sort of savings. But to your point, this piece is similar to what this is? So you could see some advantage in pricing from?
Well, and that's what I'm wondering is that the, you know, the number of firms that can do the general drainage, and maybe it's probably larger than the number of firms that can do a tennis court, because it's more specialized.
Complete.
And while the tennis companies that can do a tennis court could also do, you know, the parking lot, they're probably not as price competitive as the more general firm that just does asphalt and drainage and whatnot.
And quite, quite honestly, they're, the companies that do this type of work rarely do this kind of work in and of itself. So you're not going to have.
They wouldn't.
Hyver or Vascal or somebody like that attempting to do roadwork. They typically don't bid that kind of thing. So those types of contractors that do the tennis court systems, that's kind of their niche. They have the equipment for that sort of thing. And if they were doing a more extensive part of parking lot, they might not even pay it themselves. They might hire, you know, one of the other local companies. There are a lot of really good local asphalt companies to come in and do that piece of it. So this can be bid, if you ultimately bid it that way, you can bid this as like a contract A, contract B sort of thing. You do that a lot. And there'd be a contract C option. Contract A would be tennis courts, contract B would be the paving, for example. And then contract C would be a combo bid. And you can see how all those prices line up and see if there's any advantage. The thing that I would say is if they get close and you had a combo C that was close to a need-to-be with different companies, I would tend towards the contract C that's all under one umbrella. Just even if you're paying a little bit more, just you have that kind of relationship of that work. Unless you break this off and tie it to some other property, that's what. Let's move some kitchen. Other questions?
Right there.
Yes?
I know at one point, there was discussions about making it wheelchair accessible. Do you know if that's included in what we're looking at?
With this edge, it's really prohibitive. You can't really get down this edge. If we were to do that, your access point would have to come down in some area down here. We have not incorporated that.
Okay, try to tie it from the level of support on the road on top.
Up here, even this, you can see right here, there's some really heavy topography out through here. It flattens out down here. You could potentially do it down here. The only thing I don't like about this is that you're trying to get people to come down a roadway to access this, and that's, I tend to not want people to walk it down a roadway. If you're able to come off the parking lot down here, for example, where it's fairly flat, you could put in a small section of sidewalk and pick up that. We probably want to widen this edge a little bit if that was something that ultimately we want to.
Would you be able to come in from the baseball field area?
Down here, no. This, this, it's hard to see in this.
None of the top of the hill.
Up here?
It's basically right between the baseball bleachers and the batting cage, where that line runs, right there.
Right there, that is not terrible. The thing I like about over here, there's a little bit of topography, but this is next parking. So you could essentially park over there and get access to it and not have to walk down one here. I guess you could park along this edge and kind of make your way in here to.
I would say that because that makes the baseball bleachers ADA compliant.
That's a very.
What are the conditions for USTA grants?
ADA wheelchair access, so this is something being applied.
Really what you would be adding is sidewalk. And sidewalk is six bucks a square foot, you know, seven bucks a square foot. So it's just the distance and whatever we want for a width. I mean, something like this would probably be doing five, six-foot wide sidewalk typically. Other questions?
Okay. So next steps, we're still going to continue fundraising, right? We, and so I see that you've been working very hard and you have a lot of things in the hopper for that. You've made your plans for the spring. The board will be looking at priorities. We have a list of ten priorities, and if you look at that on our agenda, this is one, you know, one thing on that, on that list. I mean, it sounds like, you know, Mark came up with some good points with maybe how we creatively look at this. You know, when we bid something out, we have to have the money ready and placed to start bidding because you have to take the bid. So we can't just do that, you know, and see what comes back.
You can't do it by choice.
Right.
No, I mean, it would not be fair to betters. You would, you would dip out.
Plus, the bids will change over time as things change over time. So you need to do it as you're ready to go.
Correct.
Okay. So right now, we're in a holding pattern still.
The difference would be is if you were on the cost and you're hoping for bids going in where we're anticipating it, and that would be the only time I would say, yeah, you're probably okay to bid it. But if it's something where you're, you know, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars, we're anticipating that one.
Which is where we're at currently.
Yeah, I would, I would.
Okay. All right.
Well, so the other, the other item that the board, you know, essentially needs to give some direction on now that we've had the presentation is that, you know, because the costs were split out, at least for illustrative purposes, if you did it separately, there's the drainage and then there's the tennis courts. So, you know, just to maybe re-ground everybody in our tennis community, where, where the board was the last time we talked and set the direction was the board was committed to putting two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars into the tennis courts. And the drainage was like this thing over here, it's like, what, is that, is that part of the tennis courts? Is it not part of the tennis courts? You know, so we have pricing separate. So we're, if the board's, a board's commitment is two-fifty, and the tennis courts by themselves is the estimate's three-eighty to four-hundred, so just take the top end. So that leaves a hundred and fifty difference just to do the tennis courts. And you know, the tennis community has been fundraising. So right now, that is the portion. And then there's the seventy-five to a hundred thousand to do the drainage, which the board needs to give thought to. Do we, you know, does that, is that considered part of the tennis project, which then elevates its cost to, you know, up to five-hundred thousand dollars? Or is that segregated off of the tennis courts and back on to the board's list as another priority, realizing that that has to be done or should is being recommended to be done in conjunction with the tennis courts? Right?
Right.
I guess, you know, Chris, the, do you have any sense of, you know, because I know these are just estimates, but the estimates can change if you're giving contractors more work. And when we look at our PI, you know, and the drainage work that's on the, on our PI list, you know, that's close by to this, do you have any sense of what, you know, what this would, you know, what this could do from a pricing standpoint if it gets bundled in with, with the other drainage work and we go with, you know, contractors that are just doing more general asphalt and drainage?
So the, the large project, obviously, is. So the, the large project, obviously, is the drive between the baseball fields. And that, that would be the quarter million that you referenced. And then we spend about $50,000 a year just maybe eating the existing lots, crack filling and fixing collapsing, the catch basins and so forth. So, I mean, we would have to take a look at the, and refocus. And I can't, you know, my computer won't be darned. I don't recall a year, what fiscal year I identified the quarter million in Emerald was 21 or 22.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yeah. You got 20, you got 20,000 next year, 150,000 in '22, 250 in '23, and 25 in '24. Well, I don't, I guess, from a board's standpoint, we don't, because we're not ready to pull the trigger and have the money to go forward on, on the tennis project right now, the board, we have some time to think about this and how we want to handle it. So I don't think that changes the path forward, which is, you know, fundraising is needed so that, you know, funds can be available to do the tennis courts. And then maybe we, we, you know, Chris, take a look at this and see what, what options are there? If we bundle this in with the other drainage work. That, that item on our master plan ranking is item eight. So out of, out of our top items, it's a little lower on the list because we can keep repairs.
The tennis courts are?
No, the, the, it's site, the item is site, asphalt, concrete and drainage. That's on our master list, and it's item eight. Tennis courts are number two.
Three.
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 Tennis courts are number three, right after roofing and middle school security. So tennis courts are very high, but, so anyway, the, the drainage, the drainage portion of the tennis project, we don't need to give any direction today on it, but it is a, an item the board will need to revisit to figure out what we want to do with that. And maybe we can get some options if you can look at pricing on some of this.
What you'll have too, I mean, within a matter of a week or two, we'll have construction documents for all the work I just described. So our engineers are finalizing all those documents. And, I mean, if we need to break some of that off or they need to reallocate that to a different project that you envisioned, then they could definitely do that sort of thing. So you have flexibility, but this part's never designed, so it's, it's ready to go.
But I, I do think, you know, for, for our tennis community, you know, you do need to provide some direction on whether you're gonna include the drainage as part of that so they have some, you know, goals for fundraising. So, I mean, I think, you know, while you don't need to make that decision, you need to give some direction in, are you thinking about, you know, is that a cost that we're adding to the tennis court project? Or is this a cost that, that the board wants to look at on their own and then, you know, need to make a decision how that happens? But I think for our tennis parents who are actively fundraising, they need to, they need to know what their target is. So if the board's committed the $250,000 and you're saying that that includes the drainage, then they're raising $250,000. If you're saving, saying no that the board will take care of that, they're raising the delta between the 250 that the board committed and whatever it is that they need for that tennis court. So, you know, for our tennis parents, I think that, you know, that's a conversation that you probably should decide sooner than later so that they have some direction and goals to set for their fundraising.
Yeah. I mean, we are, we are very sensitive, and we all agree that we're gonna be working together on this. And we're gonna look for creative ways to get that number so it's doable. So just keep doing what you're doing, and we'll keep having this conversation. It might be next month, it might be the following. But, you know, for now, we have the spring set. Well, we're committing to, you know, like you said, to getting this done.
Well, and I mean, I think we need to, Craig is coming on board officially as of February 3rd. And so this is one of the things we had just talked about at our work session earlier. He's gonna know a little bit more once he's on board. And hopefully can advise us of creative ways to.
And Craig has a history of creative solutions. Or his treasurer job. So if you weren't there, he was in charge of the aquatics. So.
How are you with asphalt?
Yeah.
I've learned a lot about asphalt and gravel, actually, so.
He carries bags allegedly. Wasn't he carrying sandbags one week?
I carried sandbags and gravel, yes.
Yeah, gravel, so, yeah. We may put him to work as well, so. But we'll keep working on this, okay?
Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, Joe makes a good point. We do need to put a stake in the ground.
We do, yeah.
Sooner rather than later. You know, maybe let's come back in the next meeting, and maybe, Chris, you can take a look at some of this drainage stuff and see what, you know, what your thoughts are. Craig gets in, you know, see, you know, so we can circle back. It's not gonna change any of our path forward if we take a month or two to, you know, explore what our options are. But that's something we have to circle back on.
So, and just one other point to consider from a timing standpoint. You know, we have plans for what we're doing with spring season of tennis, but depending on where you are in your fundraising efforts, that also could impact the fall season of tennis. And so, you know, wherever you are in coming up to whatever number, that also, because those schedules start to get set now too. So we have to know what we're doing for fall as well, because if we're waiting a couple months to make a decision or figure that out and in combination not having the funds, that information should be known sooner than later. So, you know, we, you know, I let, I let Dan know that, you know, this could impact more than one season. Right now, the plan was only spring, you know, based on before we knew numbers and what, what have you. But now we're looking at a potential second season of tennis. We need to know that sooner than later as well, just so we can plan accordingly.
I, I just, some clarifications regarding the drainage specific. So Ryan was very clear that he made the recommendation that we do not install the tennis courts without the drainage. I just need clarification, is the board looking at doing this drainage independently? Because that's what I'm exploring. See if we can't roll that into other asphalt work that we perform. So that would then not be a part of the tennis court project. We would fund that out of permanent improvement funds moving forward. If it's our intention to do the drainage as asphalt work this coming summer, which I would think it is, because it's a high priority, then we are going to want to work with Ryan to get that out to bid as quickly as possible, which means we would be before the board in February with an asphalt bid package that would include this work. So that that piece of this project is addressed in support of the future installation of the tennis courts.
Yeah, makes sense. If we're gonna do that, it makes sense to do that. If we're gonna separate it, it makes sense to do that first.
I mean, separating them with the idea that there's a cost savings. I mean, so, I mean, the board would have to see, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, some of this, the, the option to separate it and bundle it in with other asphalt and drainage work is, it was, is put, is put out as, can this save us money?
Yes.
Right? And so if we can, you know, then it, it makes sense to, to take that bite of the apple first. And it, and so again, I'm going to use Ryan's previous statement again.
There is generally savings, pretty much automatic. Mobilization costs are going to be the same whether you do just this work or this work and additional asphalt work. So there would be savings that are gonna be built in to a larger project. So by nature of doing more work, you save money. You also get more competition when you're looking at larger work. And so sometimes that drives price. And so we will certainly get together and develop that and present it to the board as quickly as we can.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, that's, we have a mid-February meeting, which we still have to discuss with, with other board members, but we had talked about it at our agenda meeting. We had that mid-February meeting where maybe if this was for that, we could actually hit, not make any decision-making, but we would have the information by that mid-February meeting, which I believe was, we were gonna talk about February 10th. Is that right, Mark? February 9th or 10th? Is that too short of a runway for you to?
I think it was the.
Sorry, is that just to discuss scope or is that for?
We were gonna use that as a opportunity to discuss whatever came up in between board meetings.
I, that would be enough time to maybe talk about scope, but you wouldn't have time to do it.
No.
I think you need to know now, right?
No, Brian and I will get together and we will develop the scope for, to present to the board mid-February.
Is it February 9th or February 11th? And I think we said to have it at, like, early because of.
Well, that's what I wrote down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which we still have to work out. But that's what, tentatively, we're putting on the table, okay? So that would be a good midway point for us to possibly make a decision.
Just to be clear, that the scope of work, what, what is gonna be in that scope?
So we will look at some of the asphalt issues along this drive. And we have some serious asphalt issues in the high school parking lot as well, which is close enough.
I have a, I have a question for, can you go back to that one slide with all the prices on there? Just a quick question for you. Now, the price for the, the tennis courts and everything, is that going through, like VASCO, for example, to put down the courts or is that just?
This, this would be a qualified tennis court installer, yes. So essentially, what we write in our bid specification is that the contractor installing the tennis court system has to have, you know, seven years' experience installing tennis courts and yada, yada, yada. Basically, to cover your bases, make sure that you don't end up with somebody that's a road paver that's installing tennis courts.
Now, now, for an example, like VASCO came out, like when Chris and I were there and Mark, and VASCO gave an estimate for the courts to redo them completely, everything at about 3 to 325 for the five courts. So the, the price point there, like where is the, if you could explain where the excess, like 75K is coming from?
If you're.
In addition to that?
Yeah, it's not quite that. I mean, we're at 380 and you were saying 325, so it's.
Like 3 to 325, so if you're on one end to the other, I mean, still.
The point is, they oftentimes, they're giving you a fly-by-the-seater-of-the-pants sort of number, which is not my favorite way to approach this sort of thing, is just walking out there and taking a look at it. They haven't looked at the grading, they haven't included the stairs, they haven't included the perimeter drainage, is my guess. And if they give you a price, and when they bid it and it comes in at that 325 jump line, I mean, that would be a great price. But this pricing is identical in a lot of ways to projects we've just literally just bid and just built. And this is actually a touch under that, just because I think some of the things we're doing at this tennis court are a little simpler than the other one we did. That one was actually 75,800 and change per tennis court. This is a little under that in kind of our speculation, and it's just based on the fact that you have an existing footprint there. So I feel a lot of times when you get that kind of just somebody showing up on site, you get a, a number that might not have all the pieces, parts baked into it.
So this number is your estimated, based on what's been done for other courts?
Yes.
But it could be.
Yes.
A fair amount lower, like not a ridiculous amount lower.
VASCO bid the other job that I was talking about, and they were higher. So, again, it depends on who came out and visited the site, who gave you the numbers, what information they had at the time. They're a great company. I'm not, I'm not talking down about them. I'm talking down a little bit about that process. I think that process has holes in it, and that you lose some of this information. And there might be pieces, parts they're not contemplating when they're, when they're giving that pricing. But again, if they came in that hole, that'd be fantastic. But my expectation is, based on this, based on the project we just had done, we're gonna be somewhere in that neighborhood, especially, this project was done, you know, this last year, prices don't go down, you know, so everything kind of tends to go up a little bit. So this, this, this number is building in a little bit of that fat to make sure that you've got a little bit of protection.
Do, do we know what type of warranty or guarantee would come with this type of project?
Just the surface. Generally, they give a warranty on the surface itself, the asphalt, nobody will warranty asphalt. So it's only as good as the base and everything that you put in. And that's why when you do it, you have your geotech company that did the geotechnical investigation onsite to make sure compaction is going properly, and all that stuff's happening effectively. You have people's eyes on it, making sure it's all getting installed properly. It's in the ground. This is the best system we could come up with. This is a very solid system. It isn't to say you have a crazy cold year that throws something off and you have a loophole. That, that kind of stuff can still happen because it's in the ground and anything can happen. But this puts us in about as good a position to be effective long-term as, as I could perceive. This is, this is a very good system that you'd be getting installed here, so. Just throwing a caveat out there. If that's any sort of brown smell of groundwater or anything like that could happen, and so they won't warranty. The equipment will all have warranties, so I mean, all your tennis equipment and that sort of stuff, but it's really the asphalt that they just.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, so.
Is the, the type of asphalt, asphalt you're using is, is that anything special than what was used in paving a parking lot?
Yes, it's low ox, it's no oxides. What that means is you don't want to have any iron in the asphalt itself. Anybody's been to the Costco down in, um.
Macedonia?
Yeah, Macedonia area. That parking lot is full of oxides, and you can see all those kind of swells and blooms of rust essentially in the parking lot. You put in asphalt that doesn't have that in it so that you don't get any of those blooms. And, yeah, that's more expensive.
So if a project like this was done and, and underlayment is done properly, the drainage and all the site work, then there shouldn't be any issues of, I, I would think that the, the issues of bubbling or.
You shouldn't have any issues.
Because not driving heavy equipment on it, it's tennis courts.
No, and like.
They won't, but they won't warranty?
They won't warranty it. What you, you'll see tennis courts that are 50 years old, that have been there for 50 years, and they still look good because there's no traffic on it, there's none of that sort of stuff. But they probably have proper drainage or good drainage off to the side. So so long as the drainage system is installed, maintained long-term effectively, I mean, you should have good tennis courts for a very long time, so.
So what kind of warranty would, would, would your company offer?
We can't warrant it either. I mean, it's essentially, it's, it's a ground-based system. I mean, it'd be like just anything in, in the dirt trying to warranty that. You'll have people that will go through doing essentially soil stabilization. They won't warranty it. They'll, they'll go through and essentially build an asphalt base of stone, and, and they won't warranty it. It's just, with ground conditions, you can't warranty something that is so subject to water movement and cold and heat and maintenance issues and stuff like that. You just can't do it, so. We can't offer warranties for anything. We're just architects and engineers. Match house.
Any, anything else?
Yes.
In regards to fundraising and the other courts that you built, are you aware of any grants or funding that we can take advantage of?
No, not specifically. It is oftentimes a heavy donor that has helped out on the tennis projects we've done. Tennis courts, by and large, are hard to fundraise for in our experience just because the exposure isn't huge. Like a turf field, you have a lot of different organizations that are using it, so you get a lot more exposure. Tennis courts are tennis-specific, so it's, it's more difficult, and so it's usually a heavy donor, unfortunately.
So in your diagram, you're proposing moving those drains out into the parking lot, the middle school parking lot? And when I was driving by today to pick up my daughter from the high school, and in previous years, I noticed they pushed all the snow from the middle school up onto the landscaping, so onto the grass. So it seems to me that, that drainage would then not be helpful because the water will be rolling down the hill when it melts.
That is a very valid point that Chris and I have had many conversations about. That is why we are also doing the drainage along here. So we have this high drainage that's happening along this edge, but we also have low drainage that's happening along the courts themselves. Those drains that are out there now, they're just little spot drains. They're essentially like a floor drain in a bathroom or something where it just kind of swells down to that spot. So it's not picking up wide coverage. It's just kind of a small spot sort of drain at that location. So they're not being very effective. So by putting in this, essentially a French drain along this edge and these couple of drains that we have along this perimeter, we're picking up water that will migrate down. And then likewise, to your point, the water does get down that hill. We do have the drainage under here, so I think we're doing just about as much as you could possibly do to limit that potential issue, so. Very valid point, though, I, I agree with you.
Anything else? Okay, so we'll revisit this at that mid-February meeting with the scope. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I appreciate you.
So we have item seven, other board business. We have a motion to amend the agenda and add item I, which is a resolution. Fred Mu, Mark Second. Do you need a roll call on that?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
This is Green?
Yes. Thank you for coming.
This is Wiggman?
Yes.
This is Max?
Yes. And I have an item I. So A, we have resignation of the interim treasurer. They have a motion.
So who?
Samantha?
I would just like to.
I would just like to personally thank you, John, for coming in and diving right in head first into the situation. I know, you know, that was unexpected to all of us. You have just been incredible, and I appreciate all of your support and your attitude here. You've just brought, you've been like just this great addition to our staff, and I know all of us are going to miss you terribly, and just thank you from the bottom of my heart.
All right, take your own roll call. Then how many days you can announce them? Go ahead.
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Eight days.
Let us count. All right. Item C, hiring of administrative consultant, may I have a motion? Okay, this is...
Oh, so, as you resign, we're glad that you might come back for a few days. So, this is to actually have John come back and work with Craig on an as-needed basis for a couple of days during the month of February if needed, and so, we're glad to have you back. And as you just resigned, we're glad to have you back.
I think it's up to five days.
Up to five, yeah, up to 40 hours, yes.
Up to 40 hours, yes.
If I won't be there, maybe.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Enemy resolution and opposition of Ed Choice, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so, as many of you have heard and know, Ed Choice expanded this year, unfortunately, and what happened with Ed Choice is that certain buildings that were, that earned a certain grade in a particular area of the report card, a voucher system was basically opened up for any student in those attendance boundaries. In that expansion of Ed Choice, Highland Drive was added as a building. As from a state perspective, they went from having 237 buildings identified for Ed Choice statewide, to over 1,300 this year, due to a change in law. And, so what happened was Highland got identified as one of those buildings that would fall under Ed Choice. So, anybody currently that would reside in the Highland attendance boundaries would have the option of taking a voucher up to a value of $6,000 and go to a private or charter school, which has a significant impact on our bottom line, because that money is taken right out of our foundation formula, we don't see it, it's not, so it's just taken right out, we never see it. So, could have a huge impact on school districts. We have all rallied and went to our state legislators to say, this is, you know, how do you look at this data? Because they went back to 2015 and looked at performance in many of these cases of what we did in 2015, and if you received a D or an F in any one area of the report card in any two given years in 15, or 17, 18, or 18, 19, you were now designated under this provision. And so, we've worked with our legislators, there is new legislation that is supposed to be passed prior to the February 1st deadline, and we're hoping that that legislation gets passed. If that is the case, Highland Drive will not be designated as an Ed Choice building any longer. And so, the resolution that is before our board is in support of, or is in opposition to Ed Choice, and hoping that with all of the support that we are bombarding our legislators with, that this will get through prior to the deadline, and Highland Drive would lose that designation.
Well, and also in recognition, that of the fact that even if Highland Drive does get off, that I don't, we're not in support of Ed Choice. At least, I can specifically speak for myself, that it is another voucher system, which is not regulated, which, you know, is not a good use of taxpayer dollars.
So, it's not, so, you know, we're subject to our state report card, any public school is, and so, the voucher is to allow parents to have choices to send their kids to a Catholic or charter school that are not subject to the state report card. So, there's no data point to show that even if you take advantage of that voucher, that you are actually going to a better school than you are right now, because there's no accountability system. Furthermore, if Ed Choice goes through as written, it has a significant impact on teachers and STRS, and I don't know if our teachers are aware of that, because as the need in public school will decrease, meaning because kids will take advantage of these vouchers who go to private schools, the need for teachers is going to decrease if our enrollment is impacted in any way, shape, or form. That also is going to increase the number of teachers that are teaching at private and parochial schools, which means less money that is going into STRS, which puts STRS then in trouble to say that there might not be money for when we all retire, because there's not enough teachers putting into STRS if teachers are leaving and going to private. Right now, STRS is, you know, on volatile ground as it is, because right now, state teachers' retirement system is funding one-to-one, so for every one teacher that pays into STRS, we are funding one teacher. It used to be a two-to-one, where two teachers that would pay in, we're funding one. That ratio has flipped, because people are retiring and living longer, so STRS is volatile as it is. So, the impact of our, to our potential retirement system, by pulling more teachers out of the public schools into the private, or people who take advantage of this voucher system, can be very detrimental to our profession as a whole.
And people ask, you know, why is this happening? And in some of our minds, it's another attempt to defund public education.
Been going on for 15 years, slowly but surely.
It has been going on ever since I've been on the board, and so, you know, other than that, the rationale, there's nothing, from an educational standpoint, that makes sense.
Absolutely.
So, okay. Roll call.
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Item G, approval of new minimum wage, may I have a motion?
So moved.
This is... John?
I didn't...
You sound like a McDowell, John, what is going on?
It's a minimum wage, went up January 1st, 2020.
Gotcha.
Went up to $8.70, we have to increase paying up, or lowest paid staff members, additional pennies.
All right. Roll call.
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mrs. Wickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Item I, I have the resolution that I added. On this resolution, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, this resolution is authorizing the president and the treasurer of the board, and the superintendent of the school district to enter into an amended and restated compensation agreement with the city of Brexville and the De Geronimo Development LLC, related to the development of the former Veterans Affairs Administration property. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
Okay. Item eight, community communications, hearing of the public, does anyone wish to be heard? Okay, we're going to move on then. Item nine, board member committee reports. We have the financial liaison audit committee.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Dolson, I sent you out the letter from the R of D J D 19, it's a management letter, it has been released unofficially, and if you go to page two, we were dinged a couple little items last year.
Define what ding means, like, what's that mean?
Ident adorable.
There were areas of improvement that needed identified, we got like an I, a needs improvement, right?
No, this one here has opportunities for business improvement, and you do not have to take the recommendations, but you can do it. Beekeepers tuition, there was one, there's a lady there, and I can't figure who it might be, she makes the deposits, she records the deposits, she records the receipts, she goes and does the banking, and the auditors are recommending that job be segregated a little bit. So, Brian and I are working on trying to fix it.
Okay.
Second item is payroll procedures, this statement is, in my opinion, is completely This is the responsibility of the treasurer to complete. The staff member does the calculations, the treasurer should be there to proofread what she has typed. They are trying to tell us that Human Resource Department should be doing this, and that's absolutely false. Schedule of expenditure of federal awards, when I sent this out to you, I thought it was a questionable area in the Food Service Department, and it was not my fault. This is, Finance Office did not close out the National School Lunch Program in 2019. I mean, you cannot go back now to fix it. Basically, you should be taking the commodities from the Food Service Department, put them into, cheat the charts that's on the computer, and that was not done. And those are dings. On the second page, these are non-compliance citations. Sometimes I do get irritated a little bit with the auditors. They ding this, they found one purchase order out of 20,000 purchase orders, that one of our staff, in the old days, you used to have a $12,000 limit, now you have a $10,000 limit, and you know when you get old, you don't remember what it used to be. And so, she thought it was 12,000, it's actually 10,000, so they, that's been fixed. She just slapped her out a little bit.
Not figuratively, right?
Figuratively. The other item, they want deposits made every day, and I'm totally, completely in agreement with that. There is some reasons this district does not make deposits on a daily basis. That is, forget, I don't know, but it could be, it could have been a snow day, it could have been a holiday, it could have been a six-week leave, and it didn't get deposited that first day.
You need to be like the post office, nothing's going to stop you, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Snow.
Yep, yep, we need to get that slapped up before this guy joins us.
But they found two cases out of 75,000 machines we did. Don't think I'm not Europe. Nine days.
Eight.
I didn't use an eight. The last item is, what they wrote is completely right. None of the appropriations or revenue accounts were posted to the books last year. They are posted this year, so it's been fixed, but I don't know how that could have happened.
Are you saying there were zero budgets?
That's why Brian, that's why Brian only got $14,000 away.
Okay. So, Craig, you're aware of all of this, and you hear these recommendations?
I do.
Okay.
Be reading with the auditors.
We expect you here Christmas, making those deposits, okay? Expectations been set.
Be reading with the auditors, probably with you, because you want to attend the audit.
Yeah.
And it's a good idea.
Okay. So, let me see.
Can we just, oh, we also, can we get this posted in the board docs?
Sure.
Somebody.
Okay. Permanent, I'm sorry. Permanent Improvement Committee?
We haven't had any meetings yet this year, but we did have a kind of permanent improvement session of five today.
Okay.
An extensive discussion of five.
We did, we did. Catch that on the video, it was videotaped. We have Board Policy Committee, we have not met, or we do?
Yeah, soon. So, all of your district committees, or board committees are only required to meet twice a year, so we typically meet after we get updates with board policy, which will receive an update most likely in February, so we'll meet like in March or April.
Gotcha. Okay. Item 10, District Committee Reports, we have Transportation Appeals Committee. Cogga Valley Career Center Report, did Mr. Gilbreth get invited?
He didn't get invited.
Okay. Okay, and I know that we, they had their, they said their nice communication, the call, which was really great. They also had their orientation night that I know a lot of our parents were going to, and I saw, really helpful on Facebook, that a parent posted a picture of their student, who's from Brexville, in the construction management, and, you know, she's going to be using that skill, because she's going to go in the theater and build set design. So, you know, I, that's very, that's wonderful, showing, you know, how, you know, some of these careers that we have, these career paths over there, translate differently, that in ways you wouldn't even think of in the real world, so, that's helpful. And I will pass it on to Mr. Gilbreth. Safety and Security Meeting Report.
We have a meeting scheduled for February 4th.
Yeah.
Fifth, yes.
School Foundations Report.
Last three months, you're February 13th, 7 o'clock, New Orleans Party Center. We just scored Cavs tickets, so that's in the offer, and we sold one package for the silent auction, which is opened up now.
Sold it like at the bid price, right? Like at the, yeah, buy-now price, there you go. Okay, and then, are you doing wine pool again?
Oh, yeah.
So, are you looking?
Changing up a little bit.
Okay, you're not looking for wine donation?
Sure, I'll take wine donation.
You're just doing that so you get it in your office? Yeah?
I'm actually...
I know the scam now, all right? I never thought of it.
I'm actually collecting $20, so I can do cash, as I'm...
Okay, cash?
Yeah.
Okay, cash or?
Cash or...
Okay. I know one person gives a pricey bottle, do you want, that's your all of it, what it costs, right? One board member used to, and that same board member will donate that bottle.
That's fine.
You don't need to know that.
You don't need to know that, that's fine, I'll take it.
I want it wrapped differently, that's all I'm going to say, no. Okay.
You want ripple? We got zero complaints last year about the quality of wine, zero.
Zero?
Right.
Yeah, and nobody like napped the table over? That was a favorite, you remember that sideshow the year before, that didn't happen?
We're good.
Mr. Whitehead, oh, I can't see his face. All right, very good. All right, we have the PSO report.
Just a few things, High School PSO, their no-fuss fundraiser is continuing to January 31st, their goal is to raise $3,600 in donations for a makerspace to make banners and posters for the district, the Zen Den, a quiet, calm space for any student who needs time to reset during their school day, and if the goal is met or exceeded, a filtered water fountain at the high school stadium. Brexville-Brooklyn Heights High School Show Choir Music Emotion will perform Ticket to Broadway, January 25th, at 7:00 PM. GoFundMe is ongoing for the middle school auditorium renovation, contributions can be made online at the middle school PSO site. Then, the Rick Smith Magic Show is coming up, 22nd of February, at 7:00 PM at the middle school, tickets are available again for the middle school PSO. Finally, the Hudson PS, the Hilton PSO, has a bingo night coming up, January 24th, from 6 to 8 PM.
So, just a comment on that Zen Den, that's the power of social media, so I found an article and posted it on Facebook, and it got shared, and, you know, any good ideas you have, seven hour away, the PSO picked up on it, and they're like, we're going to explore that, and that's where the idea came. After they explored it, they're going to, you know, start that at the high school, so it just shows you, if you bring those new ideas, that's, push them out, something may happen. We have other board member reports, Fred, I'm going to give you this opportunity to represent, you have some tickets in your pocket?
Yes, I do.
And what do you have those tickets for?
I have tickets in my pocket, although they're out here, for the Kiwanis and Broadway Heights Lions Club Empty Bowls Project. It's a project that helps to serve our local food banks. It is Tuesday, February 4th, 5 to 7:30 PM at the Cogga Valley Career Center. You can see any Kiwanis or any Broadway Heights Lion for tickets, and I just happen to have several right here.
There you go, so it'll be after the meeting.
After the meeting.
You can get your tickets here.
Tickets, tickets, wait a minute, tickets are $15.
And you get a free bowl.
And you get a free bowl.
Handmade.
You want to do it?
Nope. I just love the bowl. I just love the bowl. All right, sorry. All right, anything else? We're gonna move on. Item eleven, Superintendent's Announcements.
I think I did my announcements before, I was gonna talk through Ed Choice and where we were on that, so.
I'm good, good. Item twelve, Superintendent's Consent Agenda. We have A, Certified Recommendations, B, Classified Recommendations, C, Supplemental Recommendations, D, Approval of Superintendent's Consent Agenda. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions on any of the recommendations?
No, roll call.
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
Mrs. Krammer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Krammer?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes. Item thirteen, Superintendent's Other Business. We have A, OHSAA Membership, B, High School Options Book Revisions, C, Approval of Superintendent's Other Business. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions on either of the items?
So where's...
Just annual approvals, so we have to be, you have to board approve that we're a part of OHSAA each year, and then this is the High School Options, the course catalog, for lack of a better word, it's all online, we don't print it, but options for kids for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
So I, I was looking through that, and I, I'm gonna be honest with you, I really didn't look through it before, which is really horrible, but I noticed that there's all these stamped seals you can get. How do we push that out to our parents? There's the service seal.
Sure.
It was like, I don't even remember, but how do we push that out so that maybe their parents can say, you know, we're the ones who light the fire under our kids' bottoms sometimes?
So it's a requirement of graduation now that you have to, so the district has to come up with two local seals, and then you, there's all the seals that are coming from the state, and a student has to earn two of those. There's been information nights at the high school with parents to push out that information. And so they put the seals in the course books to, you know, so the kids can say, you know, you take this course, this would be eligible for this particular seal. It's effective, I knew you were...
No.
You can remember what graduation class it's effective with? This is twenty-twenty?
Yeah.
Twenty-three? Sophomores? Yeah, sophomore class.
Twenty-two?
They now have to earn these seals as part of graduation.
So I can put that on my, is that something good to put on my college application, that I have this seal?
No, that, well...
Does that differentiate me?
They're, they're mandatory. So what differentiates you is what seals you choose. And so the idea about this was that, you know, kids have a variety of different interests, and they might not be good in a particular subject area, but they can get a seal like in the fine arts, so they can get a seal and meet. So it gives another path for graduation, or another way that you can meet every partner for graduation if you have interest.
Okay, gotcha.
Yes.
Okay.
Did I, did I do it justice, Dave?
Yeah, to answer your question, Jeff, I think, I think they did survey a number of business and organizations in the state of Ohio, and, and they, they said that yes, we are looking for employees that have these certain characteristics, and therefore, that's where the seals came from. How many are there, like thirteen or something?
Yeah, we have to, we're required to develop two locally, and I think there was...
There is why I circled back, and I, because I was looking at, like, for example, my son's resume. I didn't see, he must have the seals, but he didn't mention the seals on his resume when he was like sending it to Miami's Food Service, like to fly for a cafeteria, so...
They weren't in...
They didn't, now, yeah, so...
Okay, so that's two, you just said that, and I missed that part, okay.
So they'll be, they'll show up on the resume or the transcripts, and then I believe on the diploma, if we can do that, because they'll be, that might be gone, but we're, we're beyond that. So, yeah, to answer your question, the state is saying that they think that it's going to add a little weight to our resume in the future.
So that's a new development. So maybe I didn't necessarily miss it. It's new. Okay, good. All right, roll call.
Mr. Dolson?
Yes.
Mrs. Krammer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.